Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The June the 20th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of the City of Longview is now called to order. We appreciate those in the audience that are in attendance and we'll kind of give you some guidance here in just a few minutes. At this time, I'm going to ask that Heath Hamerlin, Commissioner, give us our invocation. Remember those that are still without electricity and the linemen who are working. Understand a lineman and marshal lost his life today or yesterday because of it, so if you'll join us in prayer. Remain standing for the pledge.
Goodbye your heads. Dear Emily, Father, we just, we, we thank you for the blessings that we have. We, we thank you for all the support that we've had over the last few days, the, you know, through the city officials and county officials, all of the, the road crews that were out and about, and definitely the utility providers, dear God, and the, and the sacrifices that they've made outside of their family to help, help bring all of us through this relatively unscathed. We, we pray for, for the gentleman that, that lost his life, but thank you for, for not a tremendous amount of, of lost lives during this. And we just pray for all those that are still without power and that they, they're quickly restored and that we, we get past this, dear God. We thank you that we were able to meet here tonight and, and have electricity and, and we just thank you for that blessing. Dear God, we just ask that you guide our hand tonight. You give us the wisdom to make good decisions on behalf of, of the city and, and this community, dear God. All things, we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Do you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will look at the approval of the May 16th minutes. Has everyone, all the commissioners had a chance to look over them? Anyone have any questions or corrections? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We reached the citizen comment portion of the meeting. This portion, the citizen comment, is designed for anyone who would like to bring something to our attention. It is not part of the planning and zoning. It's just simply an item that you want to speak about. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any citizen comment? If there are, please come forward and state your name. I see no one, so we'll go to the consent item, item number six on your agenda. The items that are on the consent agenda are plats that meet the requirement of the City of Longview subdivision ordinances. They'll be approved with one vote unless any member of planning and zoning, or anyone in the audience, or any of the applicants wants it removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone who would like to have any one of the two consent items removed? I see none, so I will approve a motion. Accept a motion for approval. We have a motion to approve the two consent items.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Okay, moving to the regular agenda, which is item number seven on your agenda that you have. The procedure for, for the public hearing or this part of the meeting is we will have the staff to make a presentation of what is being sought, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to come forward and explain. And then the general public, those in support and opposition of, of the request, at that time can come and speak either for or against it. When everyone has spoken, then I'll close the public discussion, the public hearing, and we will take a vote at that time. The first two items, first of all, Angela, I don't think there's any public comments on either one of the next two, is there?
That's correct. These do not require a public hearing.
Okay. So go ahead.
Okay. Item A, consider application P-23-03 Mallard Cove subdivision Phase 2A filed by Taj Gala to plat approximately 14.764 acres of abstract 540 v. pedestrian survey into 18 lots located, located south of Country Club Road along Waterfowl Lane. The applicant is requesting to plat approximately 14 acres into 18 residential lots located south of Country Club Road, east of East Loop 281. This property is located within our ETJ. The applicant has not installed required infrastructure or provided the letter of credit prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Staff does recommend a conditional approval with the following requirement, that the applicant provides the letter of credit for the infrastructure or installs the infrastructure. Once all conditions are met, the plat would be considered approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Do the commissioners have any questions of the staff?
Is there a timeframe for them to get you a letter of credit?
Yes, so they, they do need to get us a letter of credit before we can file it, file the plat. And so there is that timeframe where they do want to sell lots, and so they do need to get us that letter of credit as soon as possible in order to sell lots. And then that letter of credit is good for two years.
Okay. So the stipulations is a letter of credit and what else now?
That they either provide the letter of credit or they install the infrastructure.
Okay. Any other commissioners have a question? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval. You're going to have to name the motion though and, and say with those stipulations, please.
I move that you approve, let's see, applicant P-23-03.
With the stipulations.
Stipulations that it has infrastructure or a letter of credit.
Okay.
Sorry, didn't know I had to do all that.
All right. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, we are to... D, is that correct?
Item B.
B?
B. B as in boy, yes, sir. Consider application RP-23-04 Pine Land subdivision filed by Twin Henry Investments and Company LLC to replat approximately 3.616 acres of lots four through 12, Block 1 Pine Land subdivision, into 12 residential lots located east of Duncan Street along Rainier Drive. So the applicant is requesting to replat 12, 12, into 12 residential lots. There's existing, I believe it's existing nine lots and they're replating to 12 residential lots along Rainier Drive. The applicant has not installed the required infrastructure or provided the estimate or letter of credit prior to the planning and zoning meeting. Staff recommends a conditional approval with the following requirement, that the applicant provides the estimate and letter of credit for infrastructure or installs the infrastructure. Once all conditions are met, the plat would be considered approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any of the commissioners have any questions of the staff?
The drawing is kind of small. What size lots is he proposing?
I believe the property is zoned SF4, and so the minimum lot size in SF4 is 7,500 square foot.
Any additional questions or comments?
So, the infrastructure letter of credit, if they don't do it, they're the ones that give you the estimate of what it's going to cost to do it.
Yes, sir. And so our engineer will approve that estimate, but our engineers will look at that estimate and approve that estimate.
Okay, we don't just take it at face value.
That's correct.
Somebody has to say, hey, that's...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just one last question. Do they provide drawings with those estimates for the engineering?
For the infrastructure, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion, which needs to have the stipulations, please.
I'll make a motion to approve with stipulation stated.
Have a motion to approve with the stipulations that were named.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Regular item agenda C.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider S-23-05 filed by Raul Gonzalez requesting a specific use permit to allow for one-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district for Lot 10, Block 3, Viewcrest Edition, located at 2304 East Drive. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for the construction of a single-family home in heavy commercial zoning district. A specific use permit is required for our single-family dwelling in heavy commercial to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. The applicant did request a specific use permit for the property to, directly to the north and directly to the south, and both of those are under construction. East Street is a local roadway and is maintained by the City of Longview, and this type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and surrounding uses. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any new commissioners have a question of the staff? I see none, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a presentation, the applicant? I see none. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Any additional questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairperson, if, if I could, are, Angela, are they proposing sidewalks over here? Are we, what, what is happening over here?
No, so these are, these are existing platted lots, so sidewalks are not required at this time.
Can you go back and show us that, the front picture one more time? Is that possible? So the driveway is just going to come straight off the, straight off the street?
Yes, ma'am.
How far back are they proposing that driveway?
Um, I believe, well, the, you mean the house?
Right, or the garage?
Yeah, so the house will have to have a 30-foot setback.
Okay. So the house is 30, is, to the garage, is it 17?
It's 13 from the property line.
13, okay.
I mean 30 from the property line, I'm sorry.
No, 30 from the property line.
30 from the property line.
Right. To the house, and then from the, is the garage, I, will you turn, I can't see, is this, so will the, I'm assuming the design will be something similar to that one. My, my only question is just about the kind of walkability across the front of those. Is that a walk, what is the walkability over there? Is that possible?
Um, so, I mean, so this is already platted subdivision, so we don't require sidewalks. Now, if this is a brand-new subdivision, you know, raw land where they were going through the plating process, they would have to install sidewalks. However, this is an existing subdivision, and he's not doing any plating. Those lots are existing, so he's not required to install sidewalks. Now, this roadway is a little small. It's a small roadway.
That's just my concern, because it's so tight.
But they do have, the houses have 30-foot setbacks from the property line.
Any additional questions or comments? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in opposition, say no. Passage unanimous. Regular agenda item D, Angela.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-23-16 filed by Boxwood Group LLC and RBR Investments requesting a rezone from office to single-family 4 zoning district for approximately 3.986 acres of Lot 3 and part of Lot 4, Lost Creek Business Park Unit 3, located on the west side of Technology Center, west of Robert Circle. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property from office to single-family 4 zoning district. The applicant would like to construct single-family homes on this property. Currently, they are building homes across the street from this property. The applicant did, had a request, I think last year or the year before, to rezone this property as well to single-family 4, as you can see here on the map in the light blue. Technology Center is classified as a local street and is maintained by the City of Longview, and this type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with adjacent, adjacent uses. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any, any questions of the staff? I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? If you'll come forward, state your name, speak into the microphone, please, and tell us your planning.
Mr. Nunez, commissioners, my name's Jim Scott with Boxwood Group. Here this evening, just asking for a rezone for this property. As Ms. Choi stated, we have been building homes across the street, and just, we, we consider this like our phase three of this project. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Anyone have any question to Mr. Scott? I guess not, thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy. I will now open the public hearings. Is there anyone in support of the request? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the request? Anyone have any additional questions or comments for the staff or anyone? I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. Did you get it, Angela?
Um, I'm not, did Keith second it, or?
We had about four seconds, just take your choice.
I'll pick one.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passage unanimous. We're now to item E, and I'm going to have to excuse myself. Chad, who is the vice chairman, is going to preside.
And then we'll have Heath come back. Yeah, there we go.
There you go. I'm ahead.
All right, we are now on to item E, the regular agenda, Angela.
Okay. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-23-17 filed by Catherine Brockles and Carissa Henry requesting a rezone from single-family 4 to general retail zoning district for approximately 3.81 acres of abstract 4 IC Skeller and Survey, Track 30, Section 4, located on the west side of Gilmer Road, north of Fairmont Street. The applicant is requesting a rezone from single-family 4 to general retail zoning district. As the applicant states, they would like to rezone this property for future retail development. There is retail fronting Gilmer Road, as seen on the zoning map. Gilmer Road is classified as a principal arterial roadway and is maintained by TechDOT. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and surrounding uses. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Does the commission have any questions of the staff on this item?
Angela, I couldn't ever figure out how you access it.
So, um, if we can go to the aerials, there, that driveway between the doughnut shop and the old Fred's store, which is now, I believe, the Dream Center, that is, that is this property. That property actually owns that little street. It looks like a street, but it's a driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So will that become a public street?
Uh, no, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's built to street standards, so it's just a driveway.
Anybody else have any questions with the staff? All right, thank you, Angela. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any in support of this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff.
Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name's Greg Ferris. I represent the owners. This is kind of a strange piece of property, as you can see. Currently has oil exploration on there, which really doesn't make it suitable for single-family. If this was going to be used for something in the future, it would need to be something besides single-family. It is correct that the owners own that strip. It, it's not a street. It'll just be the driveway like it would be any driveway. I, I don't suspect this is going to be retail. I suspect that we're going to come back for a conditional use, probably for storage units, which is allowed in this zoning district, or something like that. There might be a bigger box retail that could be back there, but because it doesn't have any frontage, it's just a very unique piece of property that will not be houses because of the, what's around it, and so we felt like it needed to be changed. Be glad to answer any questions you might have. I think you have my write-up that kind of goes through your, your policies, and so be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anybody else in support of this item? All right. Are there any in opposition to this request? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. All right. Any additional questions or comments at this time? If there are no additional questions or comments, I will close the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the application as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
All right. A motion has been made. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposed? Motion carries. Keith, you mind getting?
Yeah.
Thanks, appreciate it.
You can do it.
Okay.
All right, regular agenda item F.
A public, a public hearing will be held to consider application Z-23-18 filed by Brandon Corporation requesting a rezone from planned development PD-06-05 to light commercial C1 zoning district for a portion of lots 15 and 18, and all of lots 19, 20, and 21, new city block 223 of the Longview McNutt acreage located at the northwest corner of Pearl Street and Julia Street. So the applicant is requesting a rezone of this property from planned development, and the planned development was for townhomes, to light commercial zoning district. The applicant would like to rezone this property for future retail development. Pearl Street and Julia Street are classified as local streets and are maintained by the City of Longview. This type of development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with adjacent zoning. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of the staff at this point? I see none, so I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant present? If, please state your name.
I'm Gladys Davis, but I'm representing the family for that property of 20, 20, 21. 21 goes with Lot 23. That's all together, so it shouldn't be on there. I'm not a good speaker.
Okay. Are, are you representing the family?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions? Thank, thank you then.
All right. Well, I, excuse me, sir.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm trying to get, understand what you're trying to do.
So the applicant, and Mr. Ivy here, I think he's here for the applicant.
Yeah, let him come forward and explain it, please, and then we'll, then I'll open the public hearing and you can come back, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Sam Ivy. I work with Brandon Corporation, and we're just the civil engineer for the project. And the company is trying to build a multi-unit retail, possibly a restaurant in there as well, just to open up for leasing and serve the community around there. So I'm just here for any questions, if y'all have any.
Any questions of the applicant at this point?
I have a quick question for you. You were saying, could you, restaurant and multi-retail, is that what you were saying?
Yes, ma'am, it's going to be a three-unit, uh, commercial use property, uh, building.
Okay.
Which could possibly have a drive-through and a small restaurant, or just a drive-through-only restaurant right there on the corner of the, the building.
You plan, how do you plan to access the drive-through?
So there's, so there, the main drive is going to go through Gum to Julia. It's pretty much just a straight shot. And then there's also going to be a drive to Pearl Street, and the drive-through will connect from the drive to Pearl, loop around the building, go to Julia is what we have as of right now, just for the preliminary site layout and so forth.
And then you're going to improve, are you going to be doing any improvements on those?
Uh, as of right now, we're working on the, the fee.
Okay.
In lieu of sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Application, because there, there's no other improvements in the area for about a block. There's not another sidewalk, if not two blocks.
Yeah.
And so we're working on that application. But we are going to improve and add curb and gutter along all of our property border. And then along with that, uh, we are working with Mr. Bob Watson right now to figure out what the right-of-way is going to be required for the property as well, because it is a very, very old platted property.
Right.
And so it doesn't have the required right-of-way that y'all require now. So we're in works right now with Bob Watson about that.
Just a quick, you're the civil engineer, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you proposing some on-site drainage after we had all that rain?
That is, that's a, that's a different beast we're going to look at.
Okay.
Because there's no drainage system for a block.
Yeah, yeah.
And so as of right now, the, the existing is, I'm sorry, Cotton Street, right, on the north side. It all drains from Cotton Street towards the southeast.
Right.
And so that's something that we're going to be working with, with you guys to figure out the proper way to, to treat that, because as of right now, it's all just surface runoff.
Yeah, we'd be interested to, to hear and try to.
Yes, ma'am, we're definitely going to be working with you guys, because we, we kind of need to get y'all's opinion on how y'all want us to treat that, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions of the applicant? I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Anyone who would like to come forward from the audience and speak in favor? Anyone in the audience like to come forward and speak in opposition? Please state your name.
And, uh, I don't know how he...
You, you may ask him questions.
Oh, which lots are you trying to get?
Um, as of right now, it's the one that's hatched in black on the TV. Let me see if we can see. It's a, it's a lot that had been passed down generation, generation type thing. And so it's a few lots that we're going to make one lot, and it's going to be more retail shop, something to serve the community around there.
But on Lot 23, it's connected to 21.
Can we get you to come up to?
You said 19, uh, Lot 19, uh, Lot 18, 19, 20?
Um, I do not personally have the plat with any...
So the, it's lots 15, a portion of 15, which is that big lot that goes east and west, that big one in the middle, and a portion of 18. west, that big one in the middle, and a portion of 18, which is at the corner, and then 19, 20, and 21, but they're rezoning just their property. We're not rezoning, if you own property near it, we're not rezoning your property, but by state law, we had to notify everybody within 300 feet. So, if you got a letter in the mail, it may be because we had to notify you because of state law, but we're not rezoning anybody else's property except the property that Mr. Ivy is representing. Does that make sense?
Right. But one of them is ours, what he representing.
Oh, which one? Do you know?
21.
21? So, which, can you show me on the map which one 21 is for you?
Yes.
Do you mind? You could, you can go up there and point. Okay, so, those lots are not part of it. Now, you may, that, I don't know, when we were looking at the plat map, his showed as 21, but those are not part of the boundary that he is rezoning. Yes, ma'am?
21 is...
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Where you?
Yes, ma'am. If you, the two that you pointed at, we're not gonna make any adjustments to that, we're not gonna touch that property. If anything, we're doing our building, and we're gonna protect the property and make sure there's no soil runoff or anything like that on there. So, we're not gonna make any adjustments other than what's hatched in the black up there. So, what you pointed at, we won't, we won't be touching. We'll be protecting if anything.
So, you the one put them states around there?
That, not me personally, but it might be something that was involved with this project. I'd have to follow up with that.
Oh, if you did, I think he have it, he have a state off, they have a state off right, like, the way that you up there.
Yes, ma'am. So, it might have been just for survey purposes.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Before you leave, if you will, if you'll get one of the speakers' cards and fill it out, so they'll have a record, please.
Speaker? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment in the audience? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Debbie Fontaine, and I actually have a little business right on the corner here on Gum Street. Talk about a breath of fresh air. For 15 years, I have, I have had to call on the upkeep of that lot. City Sand has many recordings of me having to call where the grass is up to here. We've had dumped toilets out there, many, a lot of dumped garbage there over the last few years that we've pretty much had to babysit and attend to it, and it's taken 15 years to get that area cleaned up, and with that police department right there, I think it'd be a great asset, and I would definitely visit retail, and I have a crew that would love to have a restaurant next door. But that would definitely be a beautification enhancement for the city offices and that whole area right there. I think it's one of the best things I've seen on South Street, other than that beautiful police department. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd get a card also and fill it out, please. Anyone else in the audience like to either speak in favor or against? Commissioners, anyone have a question of anyone?
I have a question.
Okay.
Why would you not purchase the other two lots as part of the whole, the two that are missing there? Why would you not do that?
So, I think this is family land now. Mr. Ivy can speak to the purchasing of the property, but let me go back to the zoning map. You see all that property in green? That's all the property they own, and it was family land that was passed down from generation to generation. Now, Mr. Ivy can speak to the, to the two lots, but, yeah.
I think it's just kinda how old it was owned, because it's even, you know, it's a little more weird than what shows up there, because they own also to the east of Julia Street, to the west of Gum Street, back when there wasn't any right-of-ways, and property lines were in the centerline of the streets, and so, and they own one of the properties along south, so, I think that, you know, they're gonna keep the adjacent properties and then just develop this property. So, whenever it comes to acquisition of the other properties, I would, I would have to go back to the client about that.
Okay. I didn't answer my question, but thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
Be your angle.
I'm going to close the public hearing then and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. Passage unanimous. We are down to staff update. Angela?
So, all zoning items that were presented to council, including the item that received a split vote, all items were approved by city council.
Great. We appreciate everyone being here today. Commissioners, we appreciate the time that you put in, and this concludes the meeting, so we are adjourned.